We'll get started with the pledge. I'll need to order Paul to get set up.
That was all the same page.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and love of the Constitution.
All right, we have a couple of timed things tonight. First is County Attorney Janelle Kendall's here to give us a report at about 6:15, and then we have a closed session that we're going into at 6:45. Not sure why that's timed, if we're expecting somebody or not. Council activity reports, I don't have much to report. Couple meetings with Tarek and things like that, but no official comedian meetings or anything of the sort. I will turn it over to Neil.
A few. Wednesday, the 10th, we had policy and procedures, looking at police contract with Belgrade to do their clerical, that's on tonight's agenda. The Wednesday, the 17th, the Green Roof Monthly Meeting, they're looking at a 50-50 grant for improved sound system, mic, large smart TV, and other updates, possibly replacing oldness ban. Friday, the 19th, I supported let's go fishing, fish fry at Queen Bee's. And the biggest thing, I got to fill in as council rep for the Highway 23 Coalition, meeting at Marshall, and it was quite interesting, we had a nice meal. Our local commissioner, Jeff Werthrum, is president of the Coalition, and he told us what their goals and objectives are. Objective is four lane from Sioux Falls Highway 90 to Duluth. All the way on 23, that's 343 miles. Off the 343, one quarter, 82 miles will be done when our sections are done here. Then the MinDOT Commissioner, Nancy Durnberger, spoke and went over quite a few things. The thing that woke me up was a bill that our lovely Congress, State Congress passed, greenhouse gas and migration progress. And the goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled by 2040. And we're afraid that that money will go towards rapid transit and public transit and not towards improvements on outstate roads. So that's it in a nutshell.
All right, thank you. Megan?
Tarek and I went to represent the Park Board to the Legion Board meeting, and we just discussed the fate of the vets memorial on that property in the event that anything should happen to the Legion. We had a Zoom call for the state's housing infrastructure program, and we had another call discussing the USDA grant for the library. Sean, you were on that one?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yes, and then we had a library meeting later that day where we went over the discussion on that, as well as the Contingency Group was there, we met with them. Unofficially, I went to the middle school play, that was great, it's good to see arts back in the community, and the Lion Spaghetti fundraiser is this Friday, and I may or may not have many, many tickets for sale because I haven't been out there hustling, so if anybody needs some, let me know.
Right. Paul?
I had a planning board, and all we talked about was the virtue property solar garden, moving forward with that, so that's all I had.
Thank you. Okay, department heads. Mike, I guess I'll call on you first since you're here and might want to get elsewhere.
Calls so far this year, up to April 15th was 25 calls so far. You can see the breakdown there. We interviewed two candidates last week. We are planning on hiring them as long as they get approved by the council, and if they get approved, we will be starting them May 6th. Training in March, we did wildland fire training, we practiced backburns and open field, we did 22 acres. Training in April was EMR training and pump operations, and we got the fire hall ready for the new cascade system, which was installed on April 15th, so that's all done and ready to go. The new truck committee is in the beginning stages of looking at options for a new rescue truck, and in May we'll be doing fire extinguisher demonstration for the 4-H Club, and PAC Center has a touch of truck where we'll be bringing two trucks down there for kids and parents to go through and answer any questions they have.
You said the cascade is installed now?
It is installed, it got installed Thursday, yep.
Awesome, working well so far?
Yes, we haven't had to use it yet, but we just filled a few bottles that were low and stuff to make sure that it worked.
Any questions for the chief? Question for Mike, you chief, and then Paul. Mike, we talked a little bit about it on the phone, so it's not totally out of the blue, but with the accident we had at 55 and Lake the other day, my anecdotal observation without looking at the numbers is that accidents are sizably down since the redesign last summer or two summers ago. I'm curious if your experience in responding to those calls matches that, or if we're still seeing that as a problem?
No, they are down. I noticed that the biggest problem at that intersection is people aren't paying attention. We, every time we come up to that stop sign there with our lights and sirens going, we still have to stop because there was a few times we almost got hit going to calls at that intersection, and it's just, I mean, they're just not paying attention.
So, I would say we're seeing, you know, is there a decline? It's hard to know, I mean, we usually only see anywhere, you know, half dozen to a dozen a year anyways. It's just a matter of how significant they are. The one last week was, looked bad?
Yep.
But wasn't, wasn't nearly as bad as what it is. The other thing is sometimes we're not even getting the calls if State Patrol happens to be in the area, considering it's a state highway, so. But I would, I would say it's still, it's an intersection that still needs to be redesigned.
It does, and the feedback we've received from our many meetings with MinDOT is that essentially there are intersections with people who are dying, and until those are fixed, they're not going to put money here. So if we still need to continue lobbying them like we sort of have been in the past, or if things are improving, sort of looking for some guidance, and maybe you don't have to give that tonight, but thoughts to stew on?
I think we still need to be lobbying for it. I mean, it's, we can't wait till somebody dies. I mean, that's, that's kind of my, my thought is, you know, I know MinDOT goes off with their numbers based on, you know, the, the loss rate, but...
And for the record, I'm oversimplifying what they said, just so that that's not quoted somewhere.
No, and, and, you know, yeah, I understand, Sean, I mean, you're not saying we need to wait for somebody to die and then really push, that's, I get it that that's not the case, but I think, you know, from a community standpoint, from a public safety standpoint, I think it's, you know, it's out of our control, but what we can do to keep pushing MinDOT to say, look, you need to do this, you know, ends up being in everybody's best interest. Eventually, they'll either listen or get annoyed with us and fix it, so.
From a policing standpoint, one of the solutions that's been often talked about is reducing the speed limit, and my understanding of road design and things like that are signs or guidelines, and people are going to go how fast they feel comfortable on the road. Having enforced those ordinances, is that your experience as well, where a sign probably wouldn't do much to slow people down?
Correct. It's not going to change anything. Especially for people coming off a highway like that, so.
Neil, did I see you had a question?
Yeah, on our firefighters, if we approve the two tonight, how many are you still short?
One.
One?
Yep, and we'll have another one retiring in December, so if I could find two more, I would hire two more, because we will have another one retiring in December.
Are you down one in terms of that's 25 instead of the...
Nope, we're down, we're 24. If, if we hire these two, we'll be at 24.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Not for me, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Ron?
All right, thank you. First of all, the parks and the RV dump will be opening about mid-May, and just to remind the residents, you can still use the RV dump because you will not have water to rinse currently. The boat dock and the fish and pier have both been put out. Spring cleanup Saturday, 8 to 11 up at the Township Hall. We can use a few more volunteers if they're out there, and also, we were informed by the county today that they will be handling pharmaceuticals up at the cleanup also, so if anybody does want to bring them up there, the other option obviously is at City Hall here. Crack seal and crews are out today, I don't know if anybody's seen them, but they're hard at it. Hydrants were all flushed last week, the compost obviously is open, lots of users out there. I'd like to remind residents, please use the donation box out there, wood chips and compost are both available also. Water Festival is May the 17th. Public Works here, we're working on the safer routes to school yet. We did receive a petition to repair, not to repair, but to improve the alleyway up close to the hospital, so that will be coming forward. I was at a training, let's see, a week ago, we're talking about cybersecurity, infrastructure, security, natural disasters, men worn, infrastructure funding, and the lead and copper inventory. Also, we did receive, or finally got our well number eight, the generator came in last Friday, so that will go online sometime in the next week or two. And again, the residents, if anyone does have a unused or abandoned well, we still have the grant open for that, so we are looking for some more candidates.
Thank you. Any questions for Ron? Tarek, I'm gonna skip you for a second, Paul? You wanted five seconds?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to address something with the council and the community as a whole. We have been getting calls almost daily, if not every other day, about the turkey who's been hanging out on Highway 55. I want everybody to know, we are aware of the turkey, we are aware it's there, it has been at its broken leg for months. The DNR has attempted to catch it, and they are unable to do so. I know it's become somewhat of a celebrity, so we are stuck between a rock and a hard place, and I hope people understand that. If the DNR goes out and kills a turkey, it's going to make half the community upset. If they don't, it's going to make the other half the community upset. We get that, ultimately, if people do have concerns about it, their best recourse is to contact the DNR, and hopefully eventually, we'll either be able to catch it, or it'll move on to a different area of the county. That's all I got.
Everybody has a nickname too.
It does.
Legal government name, thank you.
Which is, which is why I wanted to address it, because it makes it extremely hard. I understand that for some people it's a nuisance, but others have almost adopted it as a town...
Mascot.
Icon, mascot, whatever you want to call it, which, which means dealing with it is extremely difficult.
Yeah.
Could you, on an unrelated note, talk a little bit about how it's not necessarily illegal for somebody to be hanging out on city streets?
Yes. So we've also gotten some calls recently about just generally individuals that appear to be different, hanging out on the city streets. Just because somebody's loitering in an area or standing around walking the streets does not make it illegal. Ultimately, it's, they have every right to be on the streets if they're walking through parking lots, unless they're looking in vehicles, opening cargo, or stuff like that. They really are not doing anything illegal to where we can take action against them. And sometimes maybe just simply having a conversation with them and asking them how they're doing will go a long way.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief on those two things? No, otherwise it's quarter after, so County Attorney Kendall, if you wanted to share a few words with us, then we'll resume our normal programming.
Handouts for you?
Do you need us to make any extra copies?
I forget that this is the first time I've done this with you guys, I like a dozen of these a year, so this is just the first time that I've done it here. Always I will have this handout with me, and this year, since we just started your city prosecution contract, you don't have the history, so when I go to somewhere like Avon or Sauk Center, I've probably got 10 years' worth of history of what your crime looked like in the past versus what it's looked like this year. And I will always start on the top, we'll also always tell you about our diversion program. Our diversion program is relatively small in my office because we only have one person to handle the entire county, juveniles and adults, and it is strictly for people that do not have a criminal history. So it's not somebody who's already done it a few times, and now we're going to do it differently. If you've been through the court system before, you'll go through the court system. So this is specifically for people who have not been. And this year, you didn't have any adults that qualified, but you did have one juvenile. When we have people go through diversion that are from Painesville, commonly, we will have them do their community service work in another community. Commonly, people are kind of embarrassed to do it in their own town where everybody might know them or know what they got caught doing. And on the other hand, if they want to do it here, we always want to know, and if you have community projects that we could have people doing community service on, Tree, please let us know. We try to keep in touch with our city administrators on that. You did have one that was a juvenile that went through for illegal consumption, and I believe she did her, her community service in another town, so we'll always start with that, with those type of things. Then on the next page, you will see again, and you just have your one year right now, the transition between Mr. Spooner's office and my office went extremely well. We were able to get our support staff talking to each other, so things could come in the door in a rational way and get put into our system. This is what it'll look like, each year, I'll have the amount of felonies that happen within your jurisdiction, as well as now the city attorney work are the misdemeanors and the gross misdemeanors, and over time, you'll be able to kind of see the trends. Where we see your numbers right now, obviously, we're dealing with a partial year, we picked up the files that were open from Bill's office that just came into ours, and you are very similar to, let's see, Painesville, Avon, Albany, Rockville, Melrose, San Gusta. Those are the type of numbers that we see, your numbers so far look pretty much in, in order with those. Sauk Centers tend to be quite a bit bigger, and then we have five smaller cities, Freeport, Eden Valley, Holdingford, Belgrade, and Bruton. But you'll be able to see those things side by side, and kind of see how the law enforcement is working in your town compared to how it's working in other towns, and I will always have a report back for you on your felonies. You had about, not about, in 2023, we charged 20 felony offenses in my office that came out of the city of Painesville, and on this last page with all the charts and graphs, that's countywide. You can see we had about 1,000 felonies last year. When I'm talking about felonies, I'm talking about people going to prison, not to jail, not to community service, not on work release, people that would have done something bad enough to actually go to prison. We have about, on average, if you averaged out, about 1,100 a year. The last couple of years, you see the gross misdemeanors go up and the felonies go down because they made some of the drug crimes a gross misdemeanor. They made some of the gun crimes a gross misdemeanor. So when law enforcement rolls in to handle those files, they don't know what level of crime it's going to be, it's, that's just the amount of time that they're out handling those type of things. So when you see about 1,100 felonies, something serious enough that somebody could go to prison on, 20 of those came from your town last year. 10 of those were drug crimes, and I believe they were all out of traffic stops. Five of those were domestic violence, there was a felony theft, there was a fleeing, that was actually a juvenile, 100 mile an hour fleeing. They literally waited for him to come home at 3 o'clock in the morning, and he did in fact roll in and take the consequences for that. And we just tried a child sex abuse case out of Painesville. We tried that March 19th, this is a three-day jury trial, and that person is going to be going to prison for a long time. The jury was out less than two hours on that case. So 12 of your 20 felonies last year were the same person that was charged with child sex abuse cases, and we did have a full jury trial on that, and that went very well. The reason that I look at your felonies before I come out every year is I kind of look at the, the investigations, see how fast turnaround we're getting. We have really good communication with your chief, he's not afraid to speak up if he's not happy, he's also not afraid to speak up if things go well, and we really appreciate that. And as I look at your crimes, I see the amount of investigations that you have with other agencies, that's the other thing I'm looking at, from the county attorney's perspective, also working well with the sheriff's office, sometimes in some of that bigger stuff, the sheriff will come in and deal with that if the chief asks him to, and also, obviously, the other counties, I see the State Patrol shining, showing up. So all of those type of things is what I'm looking at from a systemic perspective to see if there's any additional support that we can be providing. Back a few years, sometimes there were cities that didn't always intersect well with other agencies, so that's the way that I can see that that's happening and what's working and what's not. But the traffic stops are great, the, I mean, the police work is, is great. In fact, you guys actually have one of the highest charging percentages in the entire county. If a crime comes in from Painesville, chances that we're able to prove that case beyond reasonable doubt are very high. So I'll have that kind of information for you each year, it's eyes and opportunity to ask questions, if I don't know the answer, I'll get back to you, but please don't wait just for when I come out here. You know where I am, all year round, the chief, like I say, isn't afraid to speak up, and I appreciate that. It's much better to know about things that you can fix, you can't fix it if you don't know. So with that, questions?
Yeah, Ron, can I have some questions to share with the public?
This is completely public what's on here, yeah.
Okay, so...
She has a separate one with all the names on it, so you don't get the one with the juvenile names on it, but yes, this is public.
Some of our residents are curious what actually happens now that has been moved to the, the county level, that's why I wanted to know, they'd be happy to see that, what results.
Yep. That's why we do this.
I wanted to congratulate you on your Athena Award too.
Thank you. The warrior princess, I'm taking no amount of grief from my colleagues, but I will take the warrior designation, I will take that.
Wear it as a badge of honor. Wear it as a badge of honor. I don't know if you can answer this, Janelle, or Paul, if you're the answer, but the 10 controlled substances that came from traffic stops are the bulk of them that may have come from traffic stops. When we get your report, and we're looking at narcotics or anything like that versus traffic, are those coded on there as traffic or drug-related issues?
So if we get, if we get a felony drug case off a traffic stop, it really depends upon what the officer did. Usually, it's going to stay coded as a traffic stop, so that probably will not come through as a narcotics arrest.
So just when we're looking at your monthly reports, the drug numbers might be a little bit higher because of the coding issue difficulties on...
Correct.
Mike, one of them, someone was parked in a business parking lot, the business was closed, there was no reason for him to be parked in that parking lot overnight, so officers rolled in and ended up with a drug arrest as well as under the influence.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Kendall?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We were still on our council, or our department head reports. Tarek, you are now up.
Oh, okay. Well, just to update on some of my meetings, I was at the library meeting with Megan, E-DOT meeting, we had a safety meeting as well, and we participated, Megan and I, in the housing grant infrastructure program. They're seeking feedback on the program to try to enhance it and make it better, so they invited...
Janelle, I forgot to say thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be here.
Okay. Sorry, Tarek.
So, yeah, they invited us to participate as part of the cities and stakeholders to try to help improve the program, so I hope that they do come back and they have a better housing infrastructure program coming up soon. The Legion meeting was also mentioned, or already mentioned, as well as policies and procedures, and of course, the hiring of the two firefighters that we're recommending this evening.
Any questions for Tarek? All right. Will, are you here for public forum? Okay, anybody on the council want to get up and talk to public forum? Geez, Bill, I'm shamed. Okay. Thought for sure you'd want to say something. Biting his tongue.
Lot of pressure, lot of pressure.
All right, moving on then to the adoption of our consent agenda includes the minutes listed there on page one, the vouchers on page two totaling 237,191,50, community ed requests along with the water festival. Anybody want to pull anything, or do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Hersberg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brick, and all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries. Great. Lodging tax update, I don't have much of an update to give. We were scheduled to have a meeting last week, well, we were scheduled to have a meeting in March, that was supposed to be rescheduled to accommodate our city all-board meeting. That never occurred, we were just notified that that meeting was going to be canceled, so then we received an email last week indicating that the meeting scheduled for last week was going to be rescheduled for tomorrow, and now it's been put off to Wednesday.
Yeah.
So we will have a lodging tax update available at our next council meeting. There is nothing new to report there from our retreat. Oh, all right. And I scrolled too far, I'm sorry. Paul, would you kindly do me a favor since you're on the end and grab me a paper agenda? Or, Tarek gave me his.
Oh.
Thank you. Okay. Resolution on the sale of property to Frontier Homes, 300 Kira Court. Tarek, do you want to tell us anything about this?
Well, we are approached by Frontier Homes to purchase one lot with the option on five other lots, and, yeah, that's really the summary of this, they're looking to build on it right away.
This is something we offered, and there were questions, I know, about the option portion of it before, when the council voted on this, but I think we already had one person approach, and the option was vacated to let that person make an offer, and I think we're...
Yep, that's on the agenda this evening as well.
All right, we'd be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution 2024-12.
I'll make the motion to approve, resolution 2024-12, approving the sale of 300 Kira Court.
Second.
Motion by Hersberg, seconded by Brick, as stated on the action sheet, any further discussion? I hear none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries. All right, PolyDoc, put this up on MinBid, and looks like we've got a high bid. Ron, anything more to tell us about this?
Oh, I guess nothing other than I think the MinBid is a very good offer, very good tool, and everything we've ever put on there has had some very good success, so I wouldn't see why we wouldn't want to continue using it in the future.
Perfect, works for me. We looking for a motion to accept the bid from Ryan Thorson for the PolyDoc?
I'll move to accept the bid in the amount of $4,935 from Ryan Thorson for the PolyDoc.
Motion by Brick, is there a second?
Second.
I heard it from Thielen first, sorry, Neil. Seconded by Thielen, as stated on the action sheet, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, that carries. Right. Crack sealing results are for the bid, Ron or Chuck?
On April 11th, we opened bids for the 2024 airport pavement maintenance project. We received four bids ranging from a low of 128,355 to a high of 175,980. The low bid was submitted by Struck and Irwin Paving, they're a company that does a lot of work at airports around the state, so very, very familiar with this type of project. They were below the estimate, the estimate was just above, just under $142,000. So based on that, if the council wishes to move forward, we'd recommend the contract be awarded to Struck and Irwin Paving in the amount of $128,355, and that award is contingent upon us getting our federal grant. Really, the process is we would submit the grant request now that we have bids. Typically, those grant, we get those grant documents towards the later part of the summer in the August, August timeframe.
And I assume because these folks, these companies are experienced with airport projects, they know that they're waiting for grant approval?
Yeah.
It will remain valid for a while?
Correct.
I guess I did follow up and called their references on three different airports on the product and the crew, and all three of them said they did very good work, and they would use the material again, so.
So we have a recommendation to approve the bid to Struck and Irwin Paving, amount of 128,355, is there a motion for that?
I'll move to approve the bid and award the contract to Struck and Irwin Paving, Inc., in the amount of $128,355 contingent upon the availability of federal funds.
This motion by Brick is stated on the action sheet for the crack seal project, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hersberg, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to add something here. 5% local, where does that come out of?
Ron?
That would come out of the airport capital improvement, which right now, there is enough money in there to cover it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
All right, we're good. All right, all those in favor then indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Right. Tarek, on the 311 Washburn Ave. On our update here.
Yeah, well, we've been going back and forth, and, you know, probably Bill Spooner can give you a little bit more intimate details since he's been in touch with the attorney, but we did present an offer, or not an offer, but at the last council meeting, if we remember, we did request that we get a purchase agreement within 15 days, and, I mean, I don't know if you received anything, Bill, but I have not received any purchase agreement yet from the... the, well, what, I mean, what I received was an email response outlining what they would anticipate making as a proposal. I forwarded the proposal to Tarek. The proposal, I'll probably get the numbers wrong, but. No, I got, okay, I can explain the numbers. $250,000, I believe, was what they wanted for the Washburn Court, and then we had previously discussed $48,000 for the parkland. Yep. But their intent, they indicated, was to offer the Washburn Court property for $250,000, but as additional consideration, they would receive the parkland. And I told them, if you want to prepare a purchase agreement saying that, you can, but I don't think that's going to get a favorable reception at the council. I will just present that offer and save you the trouble of doing purchase agreements because I don't think it's going anywhere, but that. There was an alternate offer in that, though. They said if, otherwise, if there was, if we were to receive $48,000 for the parkland, then the price for Washburn Court goes back to the original price of $330. Yeah, which is even worse, but yeah.
Okay.
So those are the two.
Yeah. So I think the instruction was given that we wanted something, a purchase agreement that we could say yes to within 15 days. We don't have any type of a purchase agreement yet. Is that right?
No, I haven't seen one.
From what I hear, and we've been playing this game for six months or more, and $250 is now $300 or $330, I say walk away, be done. Look for new property. There are areas in consideration, I think, much more favorable, and he can sit on his dinosaur. And I'll make that a motion.
Well, can I add something?
Well, hold on. We have a motion right now to walk away from the sale and to just leave this be. Is there a second to that? And then Tarek has something to add, but I'd ask for a second first if there.
I think we should get the understanding of, what's more in detail of the motion. We just can't say motion to walk away from the dinosaur.
I think that's fair. Neil, are you able to?
The motion is to end negotiation and pursue different locations.
Okay, so there's a motion by Hersberg to end negotiations regarding the community parkland at 311 Washburn and pursue alternate sites for the library. Is there a second to that, and that we can discuss the remainder?
Second, Deb.
Seconded by Thielen. I'm going to give Kristen a second to write things down if you don't mind, Tarek. All right. Tarek, you had something to add?
All right. I was approached by someone from Friends of the Library today, and, you know, they were suggesting or they would like council to consider an alternative proposal, which would be to swap whatever we were going to do for the parkland for those, the two lots that were, that are empty behind Washburn Court. Do like an even swap. So that's just something that they wanted me to mention to you and as a potential alternative.
What do you think, Sean?
It's been proposed. It's been rejected.
I think so, yeah.
It's been, I mean, we've gone around and around and around.
I personally would like to leave the door open on the park for.
I'm, I'm sorry, Megan. I didn't mean to cut you off. That was rude.
I would like to keep the door open for the sale of the parkland, even though, you know, I can still see that going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. I think at this point, I don't know that it's worth it for us, or, you know, we need to get moving on the library, and I don't feel like this is a very productive relationship at this point or productive negotiation. So I agree with walking away from Washburn Court. I would like to keep the door open on the parkland because I think that, I think that there will be a lot of feedback for the owners of that facility about the lack of parking, and they may be more interested in the future to be open to that. So I don't want to cut that and the potential revenue for the park board off of, or for the park fund off of the table, but I would, I would be in favor of walking away from Washburn Court at this point. Just my two cents.
I'm worried about keeping negotiations. Oh, we're getting interrupted here. Okay. I'm more worried about keeping negotiations going with Kira because they really haven't gone too far in the time that we've tried to deal with them.
But we don't have to do anything.
No. I mean.
I mean, I'm, I'm not totally against if we could get just the land, you know? And like Megan said, if he wants to make a realistic offer on the, on the parkland, I mean, I'm not against that, but I don't have another six months to waste on this project. And the library people and the people on the committee are running out of patience, too.
My thought, based on our discussions tonight, is we instruct Bill Spooner to prepare a purchase agreement for the swap of the parkland as described with the empty lots, present it for signing, and if it's not signed within 10 days, that we move forward on hiring appraisers and start the eminent domain process for the empty lots. That's my thought on it.
I love you.
I, but I think the days of negotiation, I agree with Neil, we spent six months.
At least.
It feels like the definition of insanity here as we keep doing the same thing over and over again.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, am I ready to just walk away from the project entirely? No, because I know that the library board has considered other spots around town and pretty unanimously concluded that those empty lots were the best space for a new library. I fully concur with them based on the designs that I saw up in Fargo, but I think we present a take it or leave it offer, and if it's rejected, well, we have other ways of buying property. That's where I'm at.
What do we think our chances are of that going forward?
Bill?
Well, I mean, I would imagine it would go to court. I mean, it'll go to court in some fashion, but, you know, you'll, I mean, my understanding is you'll, you'll be able to take the property. The question will be the price. That'll, that's where we'll get litigated.
Okay.
You know, and, yeah, so I don't know. I mean, and I don't know, I don't know the comparison in size between the square footage on the park that we're talking about. I think I'd have to look at, look back at that square footage compared to the bare lots over there. I don't know, you know, how they look at the value comparison, but we can certainly propose it as a swap and see where it takes us.
At this point, we're just looking at land. We are with my motion.
Bare land for bare land.
The building, correct?
I'm sorry, Neil. I couldn't hear you.
With my motion, we're eliminating the building?
As I understood your motion, it was to just wash our hands of everything relating to Washburn Court and move on with something else. So I think that's the motion before the council right now, is do we sort of wash our hands with the Washburn Court building and site and look elsewhere, or do we look at other ways of acquiring those empty lots?
I guess at this point, I'd like to withdraw my motion and.
I think procedurally, it's had a second, so we'll call a question on it.
Okay.
So the motion, which has been seconded, is to terminate negotiations with Kira and find an alternate site for the library. The council's discussed it. For Kristen's benefit, the motion was by Neil, seconded by Paul. Any further discussion on that, and then I'll entertain a new motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion does not pass. Right. So then, what do we want to do?
I will make the new motion to have our attorney draw up the purchase agreement that you talked about with the 10 days on just the two parcels of land.
With the parkland, you mean?
The parking lot for the parkland or whatever up for negotiation, I guess.
All right. So I have a motion by Hersberg instructing our city attorney to draft a purchase agreement for the land swap, which is the parkland that we've discussed, along with the empty parcels of land behind Washburn Court, and that Kira be given 10 days from the date that that purchase agreement is presented to them to accept the offer. Is that your motion?
Yes, that's what it's been.
Neil, you have some, I sense some hesitation on that.
Well, not hesitation. I just, I have to look at the layout of that land, but, I mean, that land has access.
He would have access from the Cronus place.
No, no. I'm talking about the land, the bare lots by Washburn. There's, there's street access to those lots.
Cronus, yeah.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion by Hersberg to ask her to instruct city attorney Spooner to draft a purchase agreement for the land swap to be accepted within 10 days of presentation. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion on that? Bill, as for timeline, how long do you think it would take you to draft that?
I mean, I'd say I could have it. If not tomorrow, the next day for sure. I think tomorrow might be a little difficult, but the next day, I think.
Few days.
Yeah.
So realistically, we're looking at about two weeks, give or take, two and a half.
Well, I mean, I can get it. If I get it today, Wednesday, I guess 10 days, we'll probably come up probably technically by Monday. I mean, I suppose we're going to, the 10th day is probably going to be on a weekend if I'm counting right, so.
We'll have it before our next council meeting on the 13th, though.
It should.
You have some sort of a response. Okay. All right. So the motion is to draft the agreement, present it for acceptance within 10 days. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll call it again just to make sure it's heard. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion does carry. All right. As for moving forward with the eminent domain process, do we want to motion on that right now or revisit on the 13th?
Part of me thinks it's okay that he would know our intent.
Yeah.
So I think a motion probably could be in order that if he's not willing to negotiate, this one might be the next step.
Are we making that the next step, or are we just signaling that that's the next step? Because I don't think we need a motion if we're just signaling.
I think he's going to know you're signaling. I'm sure he's.
Yeah. A part of me, if he said, nope, nope, you're done, and we say, yep, we're done, I'd like to pursue other sites and to have discussions before we make the motion and proceed with eminent domain.
Okay.
So once eminent domain starts, would he be able to sell that property outright to a different party, or would that stop?
You, no. If, if you use eminent domain, you have to use the property for a public purpose. You have to take it for a public purpose and you have to use it for a public purpose. I assume if you do that, you would probably be dealing with only the bare lots, I would, I would think.
So my question was, could the owner of the lot right now, once they've been notified of the eminent domain proceedings, could they sell it to a different party after the proceeding started?
Could. I mean, I would think that would be an odd scenario, but they could. I mean, you know, if somebody else then would have the right to litigate the question of the value, and there wouldn't be anything that would stop that from happening. I don't know why anyone would want to buy themselves the right to be involved in litigation. It'd seem unusual, but they could.
Yeah, okay.
Because the process would be tied to the property, not the owner, so it wouldn't, like, stop the process from happening, and I'm assuming you'd have to, you know, reveal that sort of thing if you're selling it to someone.
Although, it would be a pretty good way of determining the market price.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. All right. So I'm not hearing a motion on moving forward with eminent domain, so we'll leave that be for now. We have that. Moving on then to the next item on our update, which is the land swap on page two of our updated agenda.
Are we at 6:45?
Oh, is it 6:45 already? Okay. Yes, thank you, Megan. So we have a closed session at 6:45. Somebody willing to motion to take us into a closed session to discuss a purchase offer for real property located at 225 Kira Court pursuant to sections 13 D03 and 05 of the open meeting law?
I'll move to.
Motion by Brick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Thielen. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. All right. Will, I would ask you to step out into the hallway. You're free to come back in if you want, or go home to that, you know, Marlin girl, whatever you want. All right. So we're back in open session. We met to discuss an offer. So for the record is clear, the council received a competing offer on the same property earlier today as well, sent to our city administrator, and I think the council's ready to make a decision on how we want, or what we want to accept, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the offer of $22,000 from Karen Nye.
I have a motion by Hersberg to accept the offer of $22,000 from Karen Nye. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Carries. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. I'll give that back to you. Here, so that is.
Number one.
That's number one, so that's done.
The rest should be easier.
This is a three. Okay. All right. Now where are we on our agenda? We heard from Janelle. Oh, we're on the land swap. Tarek?
All right. We have a land swap that the park board kind of recommended and pursued, which is to swap a lot next to Ampe Park, 890 South Street, with a lot that the owner chose, which is in Kira Lane, 355. Yep. And so it's supposed to be an even swap, so no money changed for that, for those two lots. And that's what we're presenting today is the deed warranty for the swap.
All right. So we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution for the land swap, and then also the warranty deed approving the same, and they can be the same motion.
That would be lot number 21?
I know the address, but.
It's the one on the corner.
About right, yeah.
We'll make sure it is.
I'll have a lot number here.
Lot 21.
Okay.
The council want to move forward with this? If so, I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Just to cross up your lot, talking about a land swap between certain lot 355 and 890, is that it?
Yep, 890 South, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So right now, they own 890. The city owns 355. We would be swapping, so the city would own 890 and they would own 355.
Right.
So that way, we can use 890 as a driveway for Ampe Park.
Make that motion.
Motion by Brick to approve the resolution and the warranty deed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion on this? Those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries. I'm going to call a two-minute recess if we don't mind. I need something to drink for my throat.
Tarek, on that, on that land swap, I mean, they, they approved the documents, and so whenever, we can go ahead and sign those because I think he is probably, I, I don't know for sure, but I know the documents on his have been drafted and he's probably signed them, so we can just try to keep that moving along. signed them, so we can just try to keep that moving along.
Okay. Alright, we're back. Back into our original agenda, not the update. Hiring of the firefighters that Chief Stern was telling us about earlier. Recommendation from the fire department to hire Hannah Schoust and Bryce Savage pending their physicals.
I will...
Is there a motion to hire these folks?
Make that motion.
Motion by Brick, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Alright, the contract with Belgrade PD, Tarek and/or Chief Wigner.
Well, I'll give you the overview, and I'll let Chief give you some of the details. The chief was approached by the chief in Belgrade, if they can assist, or if we can assist, and some of the clerical services, because they, they lost a person that they were dealing with, and they're looking for somebody that can handle it for them. They don't have much work, as far as I'm aware, and what I heard is about an hour roughly a week, or, or an hour, hour per day? Or an hour per week?
Yeah, it's about a hundred hours or so a year.
Per year. So what they're proposing is that they give us a contract, two thousand dollars for the remainder of this year, three thousand dollars annually going forward, to provide, or have our police secretary provide that service. And what the chief is also proposing is that the police secretary also gets compensated an extra one dollar an hour for the work she does on that. So, any other details that you want to present?
I think it should be, I guess, make sure that we make it clear, the dollar an hour is on top of her base wage for all hours that she works, so it's gonna amount to a little over fifteen hundred a year in base wage, and then the incidentals, so there'll still be some money that's left over for the city to offset, you know, some of our costs with our technology stuff. But for the most part, that's pretty accurate.
Why would we increase pay if she's doing the same work?
They do use different systems, and quite honestly, I'm not interested in having my secretary take on another city without her being compensated for it. We're asking her to time management more between the work with Belgrade and our work. And I just, out of fairness to her, I think if she's gonna take on the extra workload, I think there should be compensation for it.
I know from the notes of policies and procedures, it was discussed, but, I mean, we have Ron contracting with other cities, we don't increase salary for that. We had discussions, ooh, six months or so, about Brad contracting with other cities, and there was no talk of increasing wages then, because our wages are all based off of the job duties and the complexity of those duties. And I guess I'm, that's gonna be setting a precedent that we haven't done before, if we increase wages. Does she have to time manage more? Yes. Does she have to do other things? Sure. But, I don't know how we justify that in a pointing system, when it's really the same type of tasks, if it's using Microsoft Outlook instead of Gmail, for example, and maybe that's oversimplifying, but, that's, that's my fear there. We don't do that with other people who contract out in other systems, so why would we differentiate and do that here?
So, my, my response to that here would be, would be the same as what I said in policies and procedures. It's not my right to fight for Ron, or for Brad, or for any of the other people I contract with other communities. If they want compensated for doing that, they should have brought that up at the time that it was approached. I think this is what's fair. Do I think they should be compensated for it? Absolutely. I think the other people that the city has take on additional responsibilities outside their normal work, they should be compensated. But that's up to them to fight for or not, up to me. It's up to me to fight for Missy on this, and quite honestly, from a PD side of things, you know, there is somewhat of a precedence to a point. When I took over working for Belgrade, you know, granted, that was a little bit different arrangement, but as their chief from an administrative side, I was compensated by them for that work.
So, can you, sorry, could you repeat, how much extra money per year would we be talking about?
It's about fifteen hundred dollars, and then the, the incidental, you know, para, you know, employment.
So, the money received from the other police department would cover that, correct?
Correct.
Basically, be washed. Well, I was at policy and procedures, I believe I said I'd prefer to, we're negotiating contracts this, hopefully this year, starting January of next year, and that her compensation should be part of that discussion. So I'm not against doing this for Belgrade, but I guess I'm against the pay at this point, and if it's either pay this, or we aren't gonna do it, I guess I lean, okay, we aren't gonna do it. We aren't obligated to pull Belgrade out of the ditch, and I have a funny feeling, this could just be a precedent to, pretty soon, we're back to, well, we're gonna give Belgrade police coverage too. And we looked at that avenue, and it cost us money instead of made money, so I might actually be against the whole deal. But I'm willing, if the chief thinks we can, should do it, I'm willing to do it, but not at compensation until next year after negotiations.
And if we were, doing police chief work for another community, or doing active work, I think it's different than adding an hour or two per week. When the question was raised to policies and procedures, how, I don't remember exactly what the minutes say, but it was essentially to the point of, does she have that much free time that this can be handled and absorbed? If we were adding working hours or things like that, I think that's different, but if this can be absorbed into the normal working day, I have a hard time justifying the increased pay.
And that question was asked, and the chief said that her work doesn't have deadlines, so she could put something else off, do this, and still keep up.
Can I add something?
Yes, that's correct.
I have to disagree with the discussion so far right now, because when you presented to the council of hiring a secretary, you, it was very, to the point that she's not full-time, so you don't have to pay the full-time benefits. And I believe this extra dollar an hour, even though it's, it's pretty much small incremental right now, more than offset the, the fact that she's not getting the benefits of a full-time secretary. So I think that for her to take this on and get a little bit, you know, the department get a little bit extra money in, it's not gonna hurt, because at one point in time, what are we gonna decide? We need somebody full-time, and then we gotta do all the benefits. So my guess is, I would be comfortable with, on the motions, especially with the extra dollar per hour, because it's really not gonna be that much. And that it's just gonna show gratitude and kind to Belgrade-Bruton Police Department, just to help them out, because we all know what type of, how the hiring is for police departments around the state. So my guess is that, I disagree with what has been brought forth so far, but that's just what I wanted to bring up.
So is this possibly a temporary solution? Are they gonna feel the need to find their own secretary at some point, maybe in the hiring process, at least?
No. So what they did is they used the contract with Melrose PD. Melrose PD's secretary went to the court, the way that agreement was set up was essentially this agreement that's here. I changed it from an hourly wage to just a flat fee. I've never been a huge proponent of hourly wages and having to have somebody quantify every waking minute that they spend. So this, basically what happened is the city of Belgrade, or not even the city of Belgrade, because it's its own entity, it's not Belgrade and it's not Bruton. The Belgrade-Bruton Police Department is a co-op that is separate from both of those cities. So it's run by a board that's made up of people from both cities. They contracted with Melrose, they paid Melrose, and Melrose in turn paid their employee. And just to Neil's point, I, I understand where you're at, Neil, as far as the, what this looks like in terms of, you know, potential, you know, down the road between the two departments, but I will be perfectly honest with you, until things turn around within the hiring process, and until things turn around within law enforcement hiring in general, there may be a day that we're all sitting down having discussions about creating a co-op between Painesville, Belgrade, and Bruton, specifically because, you know, all it's gonna take is one or two people to leave Belgrade, and they've got basically their chief, and that's it. Their chief may leave, and then they're, they're left with nobody, you know, other than their officers, and they need, they may need somebody to leave that department. So, you know, is there, you know, benefit in doing this for Belgrade? There is, certainly being kind to a neighboring community. Is this something that is, you know, geez, we really want to do this? It doesn't matter one way or another to me, but out of fairness to Missy, I think, I believe she should be compensated. We're asking her to take on a greater workload than what she was hired to do, and to me, when you do that, there's compensation that should come with it. But that's just my personal feelings.
But is that, will it enter into, when you have negotiations over salary anyway? Is this, will it be brought up that she is doing more work? So I just kind of wonder if, and, and make sentences right now, but if there's a timeline on this, because if she's going to continue to get raises, or you're going to negotiate for raises for her, then how long is this valid for, is what I'm wondering?
So, as...
The contract goes away, to that point, before you answer Paul, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But on that same vein, if the contract goes away, does the pay increase go away?
Yes.
And how do you take that away, once it's there?
So, the way, the way the wording was set up, and I'm sorry that the MOU is not in here, the union has the MOU that I asked them to draft. The way the MOU reads is that while the city of Painesville contracts clerical services with the city of Belgrade, the city of, or, city of Belgrade, yeah, whatever.
Bruton.
Uh, you know what I mean? As long as that contract is in place, the city is paying essentially a premium of one dollar additional pay, like a contract-type pay, to Missy for hours, you know, on top of her normal hours. Once that contract no longer exists, that dollar comes back. So this isn't, uh, this isn't a dollar that's built into the wages, like a base wage on a wage scale, this is a dollar that is a premium-style pay, that is attached, just like a license fee, just like our night pay, where my guys get paid a buck an hour to work at night, it's the same concept.
Link to the contract, yeah.
Is this a, do the pay increase, or we're not doing the contract situation?
Well, that's up to you guys, but from my perspective, it is. I can't argue for anything other than that, Sean.
Okay.
Just out of fairness to Missy.
So, I mean...
I think the second motion should be brought up first, before the first one.
Well, I think they should just be done together.
Well, then, you know, because we stand to make a little money if we do it, because whatever's left over from paying her that, so...
Not, not the first year, we won't be.
Well...
Fifteen hundred plus, uh...
That's for a full year, fifteen hundred, right?
Yeah, so...
But we also have...
She wouldn't get a full fifteen hundred the first year, because she wouldn't be doing it.
Well, but there's additional cost.
I know, but even so, it's not...
Five hundred would be...
It's not gonna hit two thousand dollars the first, or fifteen hundred, right?
It could. You're, she's gonna get fifteen, you got five hundred, that's...
No, I mean, but the fifteen is per year, and she's not going to be doing it a full year, right?
Correct.
So...
This would be an annual thing, so for...
So we aren't gonna get fifteen hundred for...
We're getting year twenty twenty-four.
No, no.
We're getting two thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four.
But she won't be paid fifty, because she won't be doing it the full year, correct?
Correct.
I get it.
He's speaking English, okay.
So it's not a full-year contract, the first year?
The first year is no.
Okay.
So, I mean, we help him out, we stand, yeah. I see the point about, you know, other city workers, but, you know, I do understand the chief's point, too, that it's his job to advocate for his people, just as it is all the other department heads. I don't know if it would be better served waiting for union negotiations, but then, you know, we could end up paying a lot more, to be honest. And this, there's a possibility to make even a little bit of money, and to help out, you know, a neighboring police department in a time when they'll use it.
I'm all good with the contract, I have no problems with us helping out Belgrade.
Yeah.
My rub comes in with how do you justify an increase in wages akin to going up a step on our scale, or a, a full grade on our scale? When we're not...
In that case, we should hire her full-time.
If she's performing duties that aren't listed.
But our wages are based off of the complexity of duties performed, oversight and things like that.
Yeah.
That's, and, and how do we then, how do we stay in line with our pay equity and our, our wage scale if we're just ignoring it when it comes up? That's, that is my biggest fear, is these things are based off of the complexity of work performed as we get into, how are they calculated, how were they graded? We just graded the new city admin assistant, and that was based on the same thing.
Yeah.
Complexity of the work performed and things like that.
I see it as separate, I mean, this is contract work.
It is contract work, but if this were private, I'm all in favor of it. But we're a city government, and I...
How many hours does Missy work a week?
What's that?
How many hours does she work a week?
Thirty.
Thirty. So if she can get a little bit of, more of a pay raise, and fit that work into thirty hours a week, and the city not have to pay for her benefits, I don't know where there's an issue of why we're not able to come to an agreement on this. Because if, if she went up to forty hours a week, we know what, we'd have to pay with all the benefits that come along with it.
Is she...
So my guess is, why don't? She absolutely doesn't want to work thirty-two hours.
Is she gonna have to go there, or is it, okay?
No, and that's part of the reason for the setup the way it is, we talked about this at policies and procedures. For her to take on Belgrade and do a contract for Belgrade outside of the city of Painesville makes zero sense whatsoever. It needs to be fit within her job, because this is where she has access to not just the county's network and all of our records management system, but it's access to the CJDN network and all the other components that she has access to. For her to be able to access that at her house, doesn't work. So it's, you know...
No, I just didn't know if she'd have to, if there would be travel expenses involved, is what I...
No.
Well...
No. Where everything is going pretty much, where everything goes pretty much online, she, everything is done here. And the whole reason for the, the discussions about time management and the fitting it in thirty hours, there are certain things that are time-sensitive. When we have people in custody, stuff like that, those are time-sensitive. Everything else is basically a time management, you know, situation. Unfortunately, our work, we don't, you know, we can't tell you on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of this week, we're gonna get hit hard Friday, or Thursday and Friday, not so much. You know, we could have really busy times and really slow times, that's where her management or her time between these two cities is really gonna come into play.
I'd have no problem if you were asking to upper to thirty-two hours a week in order to complete those two hours of work. I, I agree with Sean, if we set a precedent, you know, it's gonna, Public Works is gonna say, well, my guys go to Lake Henry, and Lake Henry pays us this, they ought to have two dollars an hour for going to Lake Henry.
Why not?
Well, of course. So it just, you know, the ball starts uphill, and you just let it roll.
But, but my position on that, Neil, would be that the city of Painesville needs to go to the city of Lake Henry and say, sorry, we gotta up our contract.
Exactly. Why not get paid extra?
I mean, it, you know, different entities are using the city's resources, and that comes at a cost. And why do people do it? Because it's more expensive to do it themselves. But I don't think we should, I don't think we should be asking our employees to take on responsibilities that they weren't originally hired for.
But right now, Public Works has enough staff, they can get this task completed, which is the same for your personnel.
We're not asking for additional tasks, they're the same tasks that she's already performing.
I believe this will be a discussion with the Public Works when it comes up then, at the time, but I think we should concentrate on the police department. at the time, but I think we should concentrate on the police department now.
We are.
Okay.
But when I talk, when I talk tasks, Sean, I mean, we're asking her to take on the responsibility of an entire another community. You know, they do operate a little bit different, so she's gotta do things, you know, according to how they operate and how, you know, the chief over there wants it. They do have a couple other systems that they use that we don't use. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that, oh my gosh, they are just super extensive and, you know, 'cause that's not the case. They're, they're easy, you know, systems to work, but they are additional things that she has to be responsible for.
I, I guess I see this and I, I worry about the precedent, not that Missy doesn't deserve it, I think she does a great job. But we have job descriptions that end with any and all other tasks that might be necessary. And if the workload is such that we can incorporate this into the schedule, and I understand that is the nature of policing, I'm not saying she's working too many hours, that is not what it is. I understand, we like it when you don't have things for Missy to do, okay? But if we're not, if all of that can be absorbed, I'm just having a hard time justifying the extra pay because it all falls under that same description that's been already pointed.
I mean, we could push her to take thirty-two hours, but then how much more money do we be paying than fifteen hundred dollars?
It'd be a wash, but we could justify it easily, easier.
I don't think it'd be a wash, I think it'd be a, it'd be a negative for our budget, but-
Well, is there anything that hasn't been said already?
I guess my final thoughts are, you know, it's, it's extra money that the city's gonna be making because of her, and I guess I don't see a problem with her getting a chunk of it. And if that sets the precedent, that sets the precedent, you know, like, it's been said, if, if the city works guys come and say, well, we're doing this to Lake Hen, you know, going to Lake Henry, if they have a case, then they have a case, you know, and they should get the more, they should get more money. And, you know, if they should be paid for, compensated for what they're doing, then, so be it. I think we should, you know, have to take it on a case-by-case basis, can't make a blanket ruling on any city employees ever at this point until we have more information about what it is that they're asking for and what it is they need, so.
If the city's not losing money, then why not?
Well, why not? It's because we're not losing money here, but we have to look big picture.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the job of the, the council, is to look at the big picture. This is different than saying, hey, Missy, you're gonna do everything here, but you're gonna do forensic interviews on sexual assault victims for, for Belgrade.
Yeah.
That's adding a whole different thing on there that's not included in, that's entirely different, and that we would need to pay more and dutifully so. But we're saying, hey, to help you better balance time during the week, for those times where it's slow, here's some extra stuff that we're picking up.
If we keep looking at the bigger picture, we're gonna be opening so many doors that I doubt we'll get much done. I think we should just have this, uh, straight up with the police department now, and then when each one comes along, then be able to address it at the time. If this sets a precedent, then that's where the cards fall. But unless we can have, um, a discussion back and forth for other departments as it comes.
Well, we're, we're opening the door. And me and Sean probably wanna keep the door closed.
Yeah, well, I think-
That's what a precedent is.
I think there are worse-
The door should've been closed quite a while ago for other discussions when, uh, lane changes were made and all the, all the other stuff.
Well, I-
So I think we should just deal with this as a case-by-case basis.
I think there are worse precedents to set than, you know, that we'll listen to our department heads about their, you know, while they advocate for their employees and we'll try to compensate those employees when they're doing, you know, good work, so.
Okay. So you're gonna make a motion?
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion to approve entering into a contract with the Belgrade-Bruton Police Department to prove, provide clerical services to them at the rate of $2,000 for 2024 and a minimum of $3,000 per year in subsequent years according to the contract. And to approve a $1 contracted service pay added to the AFCME House of 65 contract for the police secretary position and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the union for the additional pay.
All right, there's a motion by Thielen, stated on the action sheet, combining those two separate motions into one. Is there a second on that?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Any discussion? Paul, the one thing we haven't touched on is how do we calculate the annual increases for this?
I would look at it based on the, um, whatever the AFCME contract would be. So, the, the increase as far as Missy's pay, there, I mean, it would just be based on whatever the cost of living, uh, and steps are for the, within that contract. So if it's a three percent and she's getting a step, then it might be, you know, a six percent and just keeping, keeping that on pace. And I also said the biggest reason we're at two this year instead of three with Belgrade is because Belgrade didn't budget three. So Casey doesn't have the money to do three this year, that's why.
Right, any other discussion, Neil?
It was, uh, do we know how Bel, or Melrose handed, handled paying their, uh, staff for doing this?
As I understood it, basically the city of Melrose, um, sent Belgrade a bill, Belgrade sent Melrose a check, and Melrose paid their employee. What I don't know is whether or not Felicia did the work, additional hours or during her normal hours, that I have no idea.
All right, seeing no further discussion, calling the question on the motion. Again, the motion is by Thielen, seconded by Brick, as stated on the action sheet, to approve the contract and the additional pay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is two aye, two nay, the motion does not carry. I will ask that this come back on our next agenda with the MOU from the union, 'cause I think, I would like to see that and then reevaluate my vote at that time. But without a majority of the council, it does not carry right now. All right, going on page twenty-two of our agenda, the deputy public works director position, Tarek, I guess it's listed on here that you're going to talk to us.
Well, yeah, um, as you know, we did consider outsourcing the hiring of this position, but since then, you and I have had discussions with two potential candidates that live here in town that expressed their interest in it. And, uh, as such, we've decided that, you know, it, when it comes time to look for the position, we, we would look internally. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's where we're at. However, uh, and speaking to Ron, Ron has one other update on this position that I think is relevant here.
No.
No.
No. Not if it's a date, no.
If you do hire somebody locally, that person likely is not going to be certified. It takes about three years, so then you would need to likely promote one of the other employees also.
Or keep Ron on for another three years.
Yeah, three years is nothing.
Oh, I said it.
So, no, I think, you know, the biggest question that the city, or that we asked ourselves at the retreat was, do we post something now through the DDA or, or something else to bring somebody in for a time? Or do we wait until Ron gives us a date? And if, my biggest thing is always, Ron, I want you here as long as we can keep you. I don't wanna feel like, I don't want you to feel like we're pushing you out. So I think knowing that we have people who would make strong candidates, that, not necessarily saying that we would hire them, and Tarek and I stressed that on the phone, but I think they'd be strong candidates for the position, um, then I think it is worthwhile to just wait until we have a date and then hire as we would normally, rather than trying to do a, a state or nationwide headhunt.
Yeah.
Um, although if we, well, we have a deputy position at least funded, so we can, I think we can figure that part out when we get there, if we need to promote or assign duties differently, but, okay. Unless, is your recommendation something else?
No.
Ron, what license would the director need?
Well, every city is different, you know, a lot of public works directors don't have the water sewer, they'll have a water sewer superintendent underneath. Um, but myself, I have a Class B water wastewater, and to operate the city of Painesville, you need a Class C water wastewater.
And our current employees have C.
Correct.
Part of it, I think, is also the struggle of how our public works department is formed. I don't mean that as a fault, but Ron, it looked very different when you started than it does today.
Tremendously.
Yeah, and the way that you've grown it is in, the public works department incorporates the park system, the airport, the water sewer, things like that, whereas in other cities, those things might be separate.
Correct.
Uh, so, yeah, I think-
Park, street.
Yep, streets, all of it. I think it, it makes sense that we might need to do a, a water wastewater superintendent or something like that, um, without putting the cart too far in front of the horse, we might need to do like an airport. I don't, I don't know how we would need to do it, but you've been able to take on all of those things because you were here as the department grew.
Correct.
Whereas we might need to redo that in ten years.
Fifty-seven.
Thirty?
Fifty-seven.
Thanks, Ron. So, um, I guess I don't know that we need a motion right now, we have a proposed one on the action sheet to handle it in-house, we can certainly do that, um, unless the council wants to move forward with, uh, hiring a firm to take care of it, then that we would definitely need a motion for.
No. I think handling it in-house is the way to go. Anybody who's gonna come from outside here is gonna be working at a disadvantage anyway and have to catch up with the knowledge of the city, so if we can do it that way and save money, then I say we do it.
I don't think a motion's needed.
I don't think we need one.
I just like to give my thoughts on things.
Yep. All right, moving on. Ron, you want to dump box?
Okay, yes, for the pickup that we do have coming in, the 2024 3500, that we will take or does need to do, uh, utility box, um, we have three prices, the lower price coming from the North Central there at seventeen, uh, three hundred and seven nine forty-four, uh, that does include the steel, uh, service body, the actual crane is the existing one, so they would transfer that over, does have a bumper, receiver hitch, removal hand installation of the crane. So, Public Works, we did review this and have recommended it, and this funds will come all of the, uh, water sewer, uh, replacement funds.
It's a sizable bid from Renegade.
Yes.
Okay. We have a recommendation to accept or to proceed forward with the quote from North Central, the amount of seventeen three seventy-nine forty-four.
I'll make the motion to accept the bid from North Central, seventeen thousand, three seventy-nine forty-four, for the utility box for the 2024 Ram 3500.
Motion by Hersberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brick, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Ron, on the airport request.
Okay, at the last, uh, airport board meeting, we did have a lighting request from a person moving into hangar number sixteen, and he would like to change out some of the lights to LED lighting and, uh, make it much more notable in there. The committee did discuss it and they had recommended it with the addition that the person does have to maintain it, which would really mean, uh, changing his own light bulbs, because that would be an oddball for us. Um, but looking into hangars, I guess we can justify it because they are somewhat dark, so.
Yeah, the sense from the airport board was, the lease agreements contemplate that the city would maintain any of the fixtures that are in there, and although we don't think that this is the case, we could see somebody in the future doing some sort of system that might cost an exorbitant amount of money to replace if it broke. So, the thought was just if there's going to be a system put in there, making sure that the tenant is responsible for maintaining that. Is there a motion on the request to remodel?
Um, I'll move to approve the proposed lighting improvements to hangar sixteen with the understanding that the tenant will pay for the maintenance of such improvements.
So motion by Brick, as stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. All right, Ron, on the rate increases.
The other item the airport board took up was the private land rent, uh, when somebody puts a hangar out there, the current rate is ten cents or $300, whichever is greater for the private, and the commercial is twenty cents or $600, whichever is greater. And following the contract, uh, they recommended going up to max that we can, and that would be going up to seventeen cents per square foot or $500, or in the commercial would be thirty-four cents or $1,000, whichever is greater. And I think those are very fair rates, so the one thing we did reserve was to take a look at anybody new coming in, that they could be, the rates could be readjusted, so.
Yeah, so this is separate from the T-hangers that we discussed last year, where we increased those, these are for the private hangars, and those contracts only allow for rent increases at the rate of inflation.
Correct.
So at the airport meeting, we calculated what the rate of inflation was from the time that they were signed, and, uh, essentially recommended those, that was passed unanimously or recommended unanimously by the airport board. And then we also talked about, tried to figure out where those numbers came from initially that were tying in there, uh, so that maybe on new contracts, uh, we might have a different rate on new contracts than we do here, but because these are tied to a set increase, there's not much we can do. The recommendation was to post the increase.
Um, the other thing, Ron knows, um, that, I never really thought we'd ever have any issue with our leases at the airport, it seemed like, it was foolishly thought that people that had airplanes would always pay their rent, but we got experience where one didn't. Um, and it makes me think that i- if we're gonna redo these a little bit, that maybe I might wanna, uh, take a look at like paragraph seventeen and try to strengthen our remedies provisions a little bit in the event of default, um, while we're, while we're looking at these contracts, but I, I, that, just a thought that I, might make sense to do, um, we dealt with the situation, but it'd be nice to have a little more strength in those remedies provisions, I think.
I would agree with that, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the rate increase.
There's a motion by Hersberg, as stated on the action sheet, approving the rate increase, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Bill, do you need a motion for us to renegotiate or to revise that language, or you-
I'll just, I'll just send it down to Ron.
Okay.
I'll just make the change and send it down.
Okay, approval of the DNR water supply plan, Ron, again.
Oh, yes, please. If anybody remembers, back in 2018, we went through and redid our, uh, supply, our water management supply from, through the DNR. Obviously, now the DNR has finally approved it, and it looks like in the letter that this has happened to many communities out there, um, so they're just asking us to officially approve it and send it back to them.
Well, it's nothing like the state to forget that they did something six years ago and ask us to fix it. Um, so I guess we're looking for a motion approving the certificate of adoption of water supply plan, authorize me to sign it.
That would be correct, yes.
Anybody willing to make that motion?
I'll move to approve the certificate of adoption water supply plan and authorize the mayor to sign the document.
Motion by Brick, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, all those, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. Temporary street closure for the farmer's market, looks good to me.
Yay, farmer's market.
I'll make the motion to approve the temporary street closure for farmer's market on Saturday's May eleventh, twenty-fourth through October nineteenth. Twenty-four, seven thirty till one PM on Augusta Avenue from James Street West to the AMPI, vacated street closure.
All right, there's a motion by Hersberg, as stated on the action sheet, approving the street closure, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None, the motion carries. All right, we have a number of informational reports in here, uh, the fire department report, chief covered earlier, meeting schedules, month, and liquor store reports. Then we have a couple of closed sessions again to talk about some more property. Yeah, is there somebody willing to make a motion to go into a closed session for number two? The first time, correct the record if I misspoke, was two twenty-five Kira Court, this time we're talking three sixty-five Kira Lane.
Yep.
Same provisions of the statute for the open meeting law, thirteen D O five sub three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Brick, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, cancel.
Just hover.
If you want, fine, no need. We're back live, so the council met in closed session to discuss the offer for property at three sixty-five Kira Lane. Council received an offer for twenty-three thousand dollars for the purchase of the property. It sounds like the council's ready to move forward with the motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the bid for the property on.
Yeah.
Three sixty-five Kira Lane.
All right, there's a motion by Hersberg to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, approving the sale and accepting the offer, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that carries. Lastly, we have an offer on real property at three twenty Kira Lane, same, uh, provisions of the open meeting law, thirteen D O five sub three, a motion to go into closed session, or are we, um, I guess we have to go in in order to look at our materials, so.
So moved.
Motion by Brick, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg, all right. All right, Republic again, council considered an offer for the purchase of real property located at three twenty Kira Lane, council received an offer for twenty-two thousand dollars, and I believe somebody's ready to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to accept the offer of twenty-two thousand dollars from Justin Schmidt for lot three twenty Kira Lane.
Motion by Thielen, and then instructing staff to complete all the paperwork for it.
Instructing staff to, uh, finish the legal paperwork.
Motion by Thielen, accepting the offer of twenty-two thousand dollars and instructing staff to do the paperwork for that, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brick, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. And I will just note, before we break, there are three houses going up over there, and we've just sold three of the lots, so, hey, look at this. Things are happening in Painesville tonight, guys.
Oh, boy.
I love it.
So, thank you much, we stand adjourned, everyone.